Good evening, Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for another beautiful day that you've given to us. Thank you for your love and blessing. Thank you for getting to be with us together with the city council, mayor, and citizens for all of them. We've got a report on what's going on nationally. But I pray for the US administration, President Trump, and his people. I thank you for what they're doing for the country. I pray that you will protect him from all of these. I pray for this meeting, but it goes well. I pray also, Lord, especially for our deputy sheriffs to take care of us here. Jim Walton for Boone County. I pray for the two deputies and the families of those deputies who were injured this week in line of duty. And I just thank you for your love and blessing tonight. Give all this up to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And for our pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm just trying to see if it's on camera because that's not Matt. Are we good? Oh, there you are. Thanks, Matt. We love seeing your face, Matt. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and get a roll call, Rebecca, please, and thank you.
Dan Martin.
Here.
Kayla Fleggy.
Amy Long.
Here.
Sherri Gaskell.
Rose Beach.
Here.
Matt Brown.
Here.
Thank you. So for our announcements, we have our fall cleanup. That'll be September the 25th through the 28th. I know the details are out on Facebook. Do you have that flyer on the city website as well?
Yes.
Okay, very good. If you have any questions, City Hall is happy to help you with that. We have our second town hall meeting of the year. These are quarterly town hall meetings, and that will be on September the 25th, and that is at 7:00. And then we also have our business coalition meeting. It'll be on September the 26th, and that is at 10:00 for those who join us for the business coalition meeting. Rebecca, we can please get an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Dan Martin.
Yes.
Kayla Fleggy. Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell. Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Yeah.
And on to the approval of minutes. This would be the 8:11 council meeting and the 9:02 caucus special meeting.
Motion to combine as one unit and approve as one unit.
Second. Dan Martin.
Yes.
Kayla Fleggy. Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell. Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Yeah.
And we'll move it right along to citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that has questions or concerns? Welcome, everyone. It's good to see so many faces here this evening.
Would you do a better effort or anything?
Yeah, absolutely, Margie. Is there something on the agenda that heightens your interest and you'd rather talk then? And that's fine, if so.
Well, there was an interest, but I wasn't here when it was about before I...
Yeah.
Because I like to know the facts.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So that if I don't look at you or hear you, just speak up, and we'll give you that opportunity. Thank you. And we'll move right along to Sheriff's Department Major Jason Noel. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Noel, Sheriff's Office. I'm gonna run through some numbers, and then I'm sure you guys will have some questions about what happened a couple weeks ago. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer some of them. Just a clip notes for calls for service this month, last month, excuse me. We had two 911 hangups, 29 alarms, four attempt to locate, six annual complaints, 23 auto accidents, one burglary report, 10 business checks, 400 civil criminal summons were served, two criminal mischief reports, 19 domestics we responded to, six drunk or alcohol-related calls for service, seven emotional crisis, four juvenile trouble, five motor assist. We have one overdose within the city limits of Walton this month, five requests for information, 343 spot checks and business checks, or, excuse me, 343 spot checks and vacation checks, 15 suspicious activity calls, three theft reports, 30 traffic complaints were observed by the traffic unit, 55 traffic stops were conducted, three vacation checks, 20 vehicle complaints, 10 lockouts, six wanted persons, 14 citations, and seven arrests. The activity during the month, obviously, the sheriff's deputies participated in multiple occasion day. What I've heard, that was a pretty good turnout, a good event, from supervisors out there, so.
Yes, thank you all for coming and supporting us.
Absolutely. And then, if you haven't heard or heard, deputies attempted to reach to a survey warrant for arrest two Thursday ago, which resulted, or last Thursday, which resulted in two officers being shot. They're doing well. Does anybody have any questions about the incident that occurred or anything that was piquing your interest from the city's managed point as to why we were there? Everybody aware of why we were there, what we were there to do? Yes. We've had some confusion, some clarification, just so everybody is clear. Search warrants different than a warrant for arrest. We were there for a warrant for arrest on the individual. Obviously, deputies attempted to knock, announce, let themselves know. They did that for an extended period of time, at which point they forced entry into the residence, upon forcing entry, they were met with gunfire, so. Officer, excuse me, Deputy Ford took three rounds to the chest, Deputy Williams took, we believe, two rounds at this point. Obviously, the investigation is still ongoing. It was a sad day for the community of Walton, as well as the county as a whole, as well as the Sheriff's Department. I've been here 20 years. This is the first time we've had officer-involved shooting where our officers sustained wounds, so. They come in threes, we hope. We had Industrial Road a couple months ago. We had Saunders Lane in Union and Walton a week ago, so hopefully, we are done for a long, long time. But the officers are in great spirits. Walton Fire Department did a fantastic job rendering aid and getting those officers to UC Hospital, so we appreciate their efforts and everything that they did. We're just glad that they're here, still here with us, so. And we appreciate the community and the outreach. We received a lot of calls from the residents of Walton, as well as the mayor, so we really appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions or any concerns?
Are they on leave now?
Yes, they're on administrative leave. Our PIO Phil Ridgell mentioned it in his press briefing, we're hoping that they come back. Obviously, that's a traumatic experience for someone to go through. As it stands right now, do you want to come back and do you want to get back to work? But they have a long road to recovery, so it's gonna be a while.
Are their families doing well?
Families are doing good. Yes, they're doing very good. It's nice to see the law enforcement community pull together, but it's also nice to see the community pull together. The outpouring and the outreach of the support that they've gotten has been extremely impressive. So, yes, sir.
It could've been much worse that night, and we appreciate our first responders, if you will, just share with the officers our continued well wishes.
I have.
Thank you. And the sentiments that you shared about our fire department, they are a blessing to our community. The response was unbelievable, and the, all of the different departments that came to support Boone County was, I know, a bit overwhelming. It was amazing to see the support that was there that evening.
It was a good thing, but also very overwhelming trying to manage 100-plus officers on one side.
Absolutely.
The businesses of Walton also played a pivotal role in helping us that night. Kroger, Kentucky Farm Bureau, several businesses opened up their doors for us to be able to utilize, so that was huge. Kroger shut their building down and only allowed us to be in it, so that was huge. So you could tell that the businesses, as well as the community, played a pivotal role in that, so. Anybody else? Good seeing everybody. Thank you very much.
You as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Unfortunately, I hear that Chief Vest is under the weather, so we do have a great replacement. So we have Assistant Chief Alexander here. If you, sir, could share with us the fire department report?
Do you guys have a copy of our run volume for the month?
While you're getting that together, I heard some whispers in the crowd at Old Fashioned Day, so the one truck in that, that was the new one, huh?
It was.
Yeah.
That was the new quick attack truck. That is gone now.
Nice.
It's in service, so. You guys have our run volume for the month? We're about 10% over what we've done this quarter, as far as our volume goes. Of course, we're seeing uptick, but that's just for district growth. As far as Old Fashioned Day goes, we treated zero patients, had zero instances of infections. First time in 20 years not being here.
That's amazing.
So it's a, it was pretty rewarding.
I think the mild temperatures probably ate it in that, didn't it?
Yeah, sure. So. We're on the firehouse. We're starting the basic T class. That starts here in the next few months. I mentioned the quick attack truck. Public education, our fire safety program's starting in October. The theme this year is charge of the fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. We will have some flyers and stuff going around. We're, Old Fashioned Day, what kind of kicks off our public safety month, so really, it's two months, so we have a lot of it be out, out and about, different schools, it'll be business, the fire station. But there'll be flyers going around, floating around through the city as far as lithium ion battery safety and how to dispose those in the right way, and how to score and charge your cars, things like that, so. And then, as always, when they begin the fire safety month, we set up, let's check the smoke protector, CO protector batteries, and things like that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything? Yes, John?
I've got a couple things.
Please.
First, is there any chance in the month of October that maybe we could have our seniors touch base on fire safety?
Sure, yeah, just reach out to the firehouse.
Yep, well, I got, I got the area's reach out, maybe someone's gonna do a presentation.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. And then, you were talking in the planning meeting about doing a trail and treat, possibly, right, of the property meeting, the fire department, because I wouldn't be traditionally done that. What's the plans for this year, or is there any plans?
We don't have any right now, just because of the buildup of the town center. We stopped doing the trunk or treat, so we've always been looking for someplace to do it.
I know, I know a place. So trail and treat.
Sure. If you want to be a community partner, we'd be more happy to.
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
Our battalion chief, some charge up, I'll reach out to her.
Great.
Three to six on the 25th. Good job, John. Thank you, sir. We look forward to partnering. Anything else for the fire department? And with Cardinal Engineering, Mr. Matt Bogan.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I've got a handful of other targeted projects. Our annual resurfacing is underway. They've already gotten the space repaired, that the water tower done, and we follow up the rest of the resurfacing in the next couple weeks. We're also adding a couple things on Scott Street. There's a bit of the edge of pavement that's getting undermined at the culvert at the bottom of the hill, and there's a culvert pipe will pass that that's been settling since it's installed, so we'll get a look for those resolved. We're working with Dirt Works to get a couple more mobilizations out on the concrete panel replacement before the end of the season, so if anybody notices any areas, any industry or sidewalk panels that are cracked or beefed up or anything like that, let me know. Plan, please, and check it out. A while back, there was a complaint about sidewalk trip hazards on Old Stevenson Mill. I got a quote for $3,000 for Dirt Works to come out and cut those edges down and underneath those hazards. If you guys remember, we've done a couple of these projects two years ago. Those came in around $10,000, $16,000, but that contractor was based out of, I would say, Dan Mill, so, you know, obviously, you had that higher mobilization cost for the trail, so I'm hoping that having a local contractor, those prices will come back a lot, a lot lower when we can get more done, for a movie. Another complaint that we've got off and on is the big hole at the corner of Main Street and University, since it's really on the Main Street side. I reached out to the state to see if they would be able to come out and pass that. Their response was, it's out of the main roadway, so it's not their responsibility, but if the city, you know, wanted to have that done, we could get it from them. It's up to council if we want to just put some gravel in there just to fill it in, or if we really want to, you know, do it right and get the asphalt patch and do.
Can we get costs on that? Because you could, you could lose a child in that hole.
Yeah, and I've heard that the school buses are having trouble making the turn, and at least once, they must've hit it pretty good and, you know, bumped all the kids out of the seats, so.
Yeah. Which used to be fun.
Yeah, it was most fun when it started hearing kids. So, yeah, I'll check into that.
Thank you.
And then, on the, our water and sewer improvements, we've got decent documents prepared for the pump house, make our southern connection to the water district. I passed those on to the property owner on Precision. He's, we're dealing with his attorney, and said he'll be in touch with us, but, you know, fingers crossed we won't have any issues. He's been very easy to talk to and have worked with so far, and seems like he's sort of, you know, in favor of working with us. And then, at the wastewater treatment plant, I got a couple quotes to clear off the rest of vegetation up on the old side before we're adding any tanks. I have two quotes, I was trying to get further, I need to get back to them in time, but Dirt Works came back with $43,760. Lonkerd Construction, their quote was $33,500, so I just need action from council, whether you want to approve that, or if we should try to get some more quotes. The Lonkers bid, you know, with that being over $30,000, we would need to go through a public bidding process to advertise that and collect bids, so, you know, that kind of leads us to the Dirt Works quote. If you want me to get more, I can call around and see if anybody else.
Matt, are you talking about a state law requirement or a local city requirement to go out public bids?
I believe that's the state requirement.
State's up to 40 now.
Oh, is it? Okay. That must be pretty decent. Okay. Well, in that case, I guess both are viable.
May I ask, so Lonkerd came with detail, right? Is this the same detail that Dirt Works is going to provide for $10,000 cheaper?
It should be, yeah. I mean, I gave both of them the same, you know, same exhibits showing the area over what's waiting to, you know, dispose of the removed vegetation on site. You know, as you can see, the Lonkerd quote has an additional line item for hauling materials off-site if needed. Dirt Works did not provide that, but that's, on Lonkerd's number, that's on top of the $33.
Understood. So...
Yeah, I would consider it apples to apples.
So just with the council nod, then we could agree to either, correct? Yeah. Does everyone feel good about, does Matt need to be on camera for this, Mr. Duncan?
Yes, if he's gonna...
Matt, are you available? We need you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you able to, are you able to be on camera? Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Did you hear the numbers for Lonkerd and Dirt Works?
Not yet.
Okay, just bringing you up to speed, Matt, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, Dirt Works to clear what will be the new sewer basin is $23,760, and Lonkerd's coming in at $33,500. So with an agreement, not a vote, but an agreement with council, then we could choose either.
I'm assuming it's a bigger project than our guys.
It is.
Okay.
It is, and we had considered that, and we thought that, that we could do it, but it would literally take them out of every other, all their other responsibilities, it's that big, yeah.
Yeah, they started to just get some, sucking stuff down with the bigger trees and stuff. They don't have to take them too much.
Yeah, I'm good with proceeding with Dirt Works.
Well, Mayor, under the new ordinance that we have, we do need to have a vote. Just like that did.
Oh, because it was over 20? Okay, very good. Can we move forward with that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so by motion, then we could...
Right.
So by motion?
Make a motion to approve the Dirt Works contract.
Second. And the Dirt Works did not say that they would be charging the extra money to take things away.
They just didn't provide a number for it. I think the expectation was they would just burn everything on site.
Yeah, definitely, Dirt Works. Dan Martin.
I'm not sure with that being a newer company, but it's also, you know, it's not, not as technical as, you know, paving for putting in, you know, sewer or water maker or anything like that, so I think they would be giving more.
I don't normally put my thumb on the scale, but I had them do a job with the very dense overgrowth of trees and so on, and they did a great job.
That was Dirt Works, Mike?
Dan Martin.
In a second? Yes.
Kayla Fleggy. Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell. Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's not on the report, but I stopped by the park to check on the parking lot. Ringer hasn't gotten out there yet to do the paving. We did, our survey crew did stake the corners for them, like they asked for, so it's ready to go. I think they certainly should do. It was later this month, 26, I would say.
At the main park?
Yeah. Yeah, they have the, or put down the gravel panel.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr., can you question me?
26 this one.
Awesome. David Whitehouse was just asking about that. He gets several complaints on that, so that'd be good.
Please have a good meeting.
Yeah.
Yep. And any questions, council?
I have a question, just have we heard back from the state regarding the memorial bench?
No, I just checked in on that today. I had to read it back as I left the office.
Okay, very good.
Number one, what about the pedestrian bridge? Is that supposed to be?
That is, we're waiting on our, so wherever that's been standing for the last couple months is we, in the time it took to get our railroad permitting done and then get the pole relocation done with Duke, our, the historical environmental certification expired and had to get reauthorized. That's through the state and through Frankfurt. They were supposed to be working on it, I haven't heard of it. When I first talked to them about it, they said that there should be a pretty quick process to get that done, since it was already authorized and nothing has really changed on the surroundings there, but, yeah, I don't know. Last I called, I didn't get a response back, so. Gotcha. Yep.
It just happened, what's the next step to make for your...
So, at that point, we'll get geotechnical testing done on the hillside or on the top of the hill, just to see what the soil's like, how thick bedrock is, because that will affect the design of the new tanks. And at that point, Monarch Engineering will probably move ahead with the permitting to reduce the water.
What's the perimeter that's being...
Right now, the plan for that is to have it ready to bid next year, probably next summer, and they were thinking about two years for construction. Anything else?
It's gonna be a $400,000 tank?
It's, what is it? There's one tank to be installed now with the potential for a second tank. Yeah, I think they're $400,000 each, $425,000, something like that. Like the total over $800,000.
Yeah, it was all in, it'd be $800,000.
And so, so the phase one is one tank, not two?
True.
Yeah, one tank, and then the force made the bottom of the hill to get up to the tank.
One tank will increase our sewer size by about, correct me if I'm wrong, 66 to 75 percent? Higher than 50.
Well, we're at $800,000 now currently. We have two 200,000 gallon tanks, and we have one 400,000 gallon tank, so we have $800,000 now.
And I think we're, is the new one like around 600? Because it was greater than 50.
I believe so.
Rebecca believes so? I believe the new one is somewhere around 600, yes. And then, Monarch, who are engineers like Mr. Bogan, were just working with us on this project, they believe that we have enough space area there to do a second tank, but that would not be needed for decades, which is a blessing, right? So, the good news is, the city's not having to acquire property. This is much cheaper than what we thought initially to build onto our sewer.
Kind of makes sense location-wise, right?
Absolutely.
From a efficiency of our employees to have another tank on the same property, this makes a lot of sense, you know, because we had a small tank, but it was far away, you know, last year, so this one makes a lot of sense. Just know that the, I know the original tank, we may have to do some restoration on it once, once we get the new one up.
Yeah, and I think they were factory for that. I remember coming up at some point and asking that they, you know, they knew that the original tank would need some maintenance, and once we got a new one online, they could shut that down. Shut that down.
We meet with them again, yeah, the 24th. Is that right? 25th? I'm in October, yeah. And Mr. Bogan, you'll be there, correct? It is the 26th with Monarch at 11:15, so we'll sit down, we'll come then. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bogan?
Matt, I know we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet this week, yeah. Is there an update for the council on the crosswalks of the post office?
Yeah, I, yeah, I need to send a plan to the state, showing locations, what we're doing, and we're gonna have to coordinate a few contractors to get that done. You know, we'll have to put in the actual crosswalks with the ADA ramps. We'll probably have to work to do that under the panel replacement contract. We'll need striping for the crosswalks, and then probably, we stand by the post office, marking off some of the on-street parking for visibility, which we can have Eaton do that, but then we'll have some contractor, and then actually install it with deacons. So I just want to make sure, once the state, you know, approves the permit, which they already told us the locations are okay, we'll still make sure that everything gets done around the same point in time, because I don't want to have, I don't want to have it partially finished and have people think that it's open and then start crossing there before the, you know, without the right perception from the drivers that, hey, there's a crosswalk there and there's... Right. Sign.
Another question. We discussed last week at caucus, I'm sure you were aware, that an illegal speed hump was put in?
Yeah.
And so, in having this conversation last week, I learned from Mr. Duncan that it's now our possession, and we can use it if it's up to spec. Did anyone reach out to you about that?
No, well, Rebecca asked, called me yesterday, we talked about it a little bit, just it was feasible, and I said, you know, we could, but, you know, I would put a caveat on it that since it doesn't match the other ones that we put down, and it's something the city didn't purchase, we just took up the one that was installed without permission, that if anybody would get any damage to their vehicle from it, then, you know, the question would be raised, the pain wire, why was that one put down with it? It's not the same as the others, and, you know, so. I do think we should be careful with that. Jonathan sent me some pictures of what the installation looked like when it was out there. For anybody's reference who hadn't seen it, it's not the larger, the big ones that we put down on University and Mullin. It's the smaller, just the, you know, the narrow plastic strips. It didn't really have the, you know, the proper wheel gaps for the emergency vehicles and all that, so if we do it, you know, I want to go out and measure it and make sure that we've got things as consistent as possible, so we can say that it's, you know, be the same type of speed bump that we've always got.
Matt, were they, are they speed humps or speed bumps?
They're speed bumps.
Are speed bumps lawful according to the manual now?
Um, I think they are, but, you know, they, usually unlike will or volume streets, the, like, the state wouldn't put those on Main Street.
Last time I checked into it, they weren't permitted under the manual, but that's been 10, 15 years ago, when they first started permitting speed humps.
Yeah. You had that with the MUDCD?
Yeah.
And that's probably so, and that's why the state doesn't use them. The city isn't necessarily bound by that, you know, we don't have to follow it legally, but it's always a good, good idea to try to, if possible.
So with the original installation, because it's not one unit from the picture I saw, correct?
Uh, yeah, it's four, four pieces.
Okay, so then if it wasn't properly spaced in, then we potentially can properly space it. And it is usable if it meets the legal guidelines. Like, I don't want to scrap it if it is usable. The folks there, they want a speed hump. We had a room full of people last Tuesday, and they want a speed hump. We didn't budget for speed humps this year knowing that they're between 8,000 and 9,000, and we talked about the permanent speed humps like Independence, right? So if you could, when you get an opportunity, I mean, if you can use your best judgment, and we're not going to get any type of lawsuit for using because they are up to spec, then I think it'd be a great, we should consider if we are able to use them and if so, and then all the boxes are checked, I don't believe any of us would have an issue with using them, right?
But did they go on and force them to somebody?
Someone purchased a speed, the speed hump and put it down illegally. They didn't.
So you all confiscated.
We did.
As soon as you started using it.
No, because right now, the police want to know who did that, and they're not willing to raise their hand. And so if they were to raise their hand, they would get back their possessions, right? Well, they would. Yeah, so I don't, have you all found out who put down the speed hump? Yeah.
I heard a rumor that whoever did it was gonna donate them to the city, so. We'll get a bill of sale or something on that if we decide to use them.
She asked a great question. Is it effective? We learned last week it was effective. The neighbors showed up here, they want to back down, but of course, you know, we don't want the liability if it's not what it should be. And if it's something that's an absolute need, then we look at potentially, can we provide that for the citizens? But if it is something that we can use, why not, right? I mean, as long as it's on the up and up.
Yeah. I mean, the same site that we ordered the large speed humps from, the official ones, if you will, they do sell that type as well. I don't know if it's that, that specific product, but similar ones that are the narrow ones. So, yeah, you know, just making sure that we have the right spacing for emergency vehicles, putting up the warning signs, just getting it as consistent as possible to the other installations.
We have the signs, and I don't think any of us are concerned with the aesthetics that it doesn't match the one like a mock-up run, right? But if you will, when you get a chance to check it out and if we can use it, we'd like to move forward with it.
Go ahead to the list, we're together.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I started putting together the checklist and that's all.
Man, matter a lot of time.
Good luck, Matt.
All right.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments for Mr. Bogan?
Yeah, how much does it cost to install one of those?
Uh, the large ones were, they were 9,000.
It was like 80, between 83 and 86 or so.
Yeah. You know, that's, I think that included the warning signs as well. The, I don't remember offhand what the smaller ones are. They're significantly less because they're just less material.
Can we possibly get?
Will you speak up so we can hear you?
Could we possibly get smaller ones that cost less with less material? If this has the appropriate specs, do we have to have the bigger $8,000 ones if the other ones are, I mean, it's gonna slow somebody down regardless of the size.
Sure. I mean, I guess I would say as long as it's okay with, you know, the fire department and public works trying to work around it. You know, public works still has to, has to plow them. One of the benefits of the larger ones is it's easier to negotiate with a plow. Those smaller ones, you know, sometimes it can be hard to catch up, you gotta have a good cover of snow and just pop them right up with a blade.
It happens a lot of times, like, you see the smaller ones in, like, retail parking lots, and then the first snow comes and, you know, the business owner, plow guy comes out, he's never done it, and then they are gone after the first snow. So those small ones do get missed a lot.
Yeah.
They, I mean, they're gone. So we would just, if we're gonna use them, I think we really need to work in tandem with our partners, public works, fire department.
Yeah.
Make sure it makes sense.
And the proper signage, and I think we can avoid that, yeah.
The word, the diligence.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Bogan. Anything else for Mr. Bogan? Appreciate you, sir. And this is new to our agenda. We have an update from our very first city administrator, Mr. John Wainwright. And we weren't prepared for, obviously, for you to join us at the table, but next month you will sit here with us, so I apologize that you're over there.
No, thank you. You know, listen, we're five days in, so we're work-wise, I'm excited. I'm excited with the team we have. I'm excited with the direction. I've spent a lot of time just getting in front of people in our, in our local community from Canton, Boone, Ad District, different departments, just learning, trying to learn as much as we can, so I can take that back to you. So we got some good projects in the loop. I know we're gonna close the gap on some existing projects that are out there, and that's my plan. My first plan this month is one, get my feet underneath me, but two, to start closing, signing off on some things that are hanging out there for a while. So we're gonna get those done, and I'll have a really in-depth detailed report next month for council on exactly what we got accomplished. But day one was seven hour with the terti's. We, day four was old-fashioned it, right? And so we're moving through. It's a process of excitement here, and I just know, appreciate all the kind words in the first week, so thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to have you. Thank you. I know it's been a busy first week.
Yeah, it's gonna be great, right? And so I know, when I, you know, I just came from Kent County meeting, I talked to Judge Moore yesterday, and both, Judge Nakman and Judge Moore, are excited to have a city administrator in the city of Walton. And I know just being in the room at some of these meetings will be, we could find a lot of money that we never knew was there. So excited on that opportunity to pay for myself.
Awesome.
Pay for my salary through finding the things that are just out there easily for us to grab.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions or comments for John? Welcome again. We're excited. Okay, so moving on to city business. Two things are listed here. One is the clearing of the sewer plant, but I think we've got that. And then a high school court discussion. I asked Rebecca to add this. Old Fashioned Day, if you're unaware, there was a semi that went down High School Court and tried to exit up on Old Beaver, and that was a mess. And we had kind citizens that were out there trying to help the truck navigate. A citizen reached out and said, hey, can we get signage at the end of High School Court in Maine that says no trucks, right? No through trucks, no trucks. And we were able to do that on Old Beaver Road for the same reason. So I just wanted to mention that to council, bring that to council, and it's probably something that we want to do. If you're familiar with High School Court, Rose, of course, is very, very familiar, but it-
Central Avenue.
It's in Central Avenue, yes. And so the way that it curves and it's not conducive for big trucks at all. John, you mentioned something about it one way, but I'm not sure that would work with.
There's not a lot of love for that.
Yeah.
For the folks that live there. What I would say is it solves a lot of challenges, but again, the good part is I'm not a legislator anymore, so I can put in place what the legislators do. The reason why we talked about it one way, and that would be towards Main Street, was then it takes away the need to have to have that really angled left or right to get out. It stops, when the train is stopped, all the cars that are going right there bypass the train and then heading up Central Avenue. And then third, it's not built to be a two-lane road. I don't know, I mean, the measure is very, very thin.
It is.
Those were the three positives when we talked about making it a one-way from School Road to Maine, but there was just attraction on that road. Now, obviously, the fourth, that's common sense, we've had a discussion, was, was a lot of people here complaining about the cars driving too fast and the kids playing.
Absolutely.
So I think there's been a lot for that small stretch of road, a lot of conversation.
Yeah.
It probably just needs the legislation to make some choices. I don't think I want to do that, because there's been a lot for, for, and being so small, we've talked about it, I'm sure, for having a lot talked about it.
Yeah.
You know, the last couple of years, so.
I believe safety is important. I do believe that it would inconvenience residents. Safety is, again, most important. Rose, how do you feel, being a resident there, and what it would, one way would look like?
Well, we brought it up in a previous council, and it definitely was turned out.
Yeah.
With no way. The road's too narrow, it would cut into people's yards, and those houses are built right on the road practically. It would take their front yard, they'd be in the road up on their porch.
What, I'm sorry, what, trying to widen the road, is that what you're talking about?
A one-way.
Yeah, because they'd have to widen the road.
You'd have to widen the road for a one-way street?
Have you seen Patrick Taylor's report now through there?
It was on the corner of Central and Old Beaver there.
Yeah.
Where it was at. It wasn't on High School Court.
About the widening.
They wouldn't have to widen the road for it to be a one-way street.
They would eventually have to, because it's right there. I mean, right now, it's hard to pass another car on that street. You almost have to go off in the grass.
That's what I'm saying, all the cars would be going in the same direction. There won't be a pass of a car.
If we did one-way?
Yeah.
Look, I know, I know Matt Brown, he, with, the last one-way the city did, it did affect a few citizens who still are not happy about it, right? So I, kind of, unless, I mean, that's the absolute answer. It's a tough call, because we do impact lives. Just, but I again believe that safety's first. Yes, sir?
I would, just a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
I would, we could add as an action item.
Yep.
On the town hall.
I agree.
We had a very similar discussion, a plan from Elise and Veneto, we might develop for no parking.
Can we invite these folks to? Can you all invite these folks to? Yeah. Awesome.
And so just, you're aware, we will be sending targeted letters to anyone that's affected on Veneto and Elise for that discussion on possibly no parking, because they bought those houses with parking on the street. And so we want to make sure that we hear everyone, the pros and the cons, so we can do the same for High School Court, et cetera. Here's the deal. I think we targeted it as a discussion about the road's safety.
Yeah.
Because we said, oh, it's gonna be a one-way. That's just, that's one possible solution, but that's not what's on the table for my understanding. So I think we just put it as a discussion about High School Court, Central Avenue, safety, right? And then we'll just add it to the town hall.
Awesome.
Wasn't everybody on the street against it? I'm telling you that right now.
Again, I, I'm not suggesting it. I'm just saying, if there was an offer, that would solve some of the challenges, but I'm not suggesting it, right? The suggestion is, how do we?
Yeah, even if we went with no trucks, like no through truck sign, but we can, and I appreciate thinking outside the box. Again, our town hall meeting will be September the 25th, and to John's point, we were talking about Veneto and Elise making those no parking, and as he just stated, residents bought those homes and they had street parking, right? But the great thing that the city staff is gonna do is reach out to those targeted folks who will be impacted by whatever decision, and making sure that they're aware that we're gonna be having that discussion that night, and they'll receive a lettered invite, so through the mail. And we can do that for the folks on High School Court and Central Avenue as well, and hopefully a sample can join us and just share their feedback on the safety of those streets.
It would just be an invite to come talk about the safety of the streets, not give any specific, we're gonna put signs up, we're gonna do X, we're gonna do Y, we're just, we're having a discussion about the safety.
Yeah, because there's been-
I was just gonna say that most of them have reached out to me and think it's a bad idea. It's all my input that I-
Yeah, and they've also reached out asking for speed humps, right? Tony Merle came to one of our caucus meetings, and you've even stated there's a lot of children that play. Yeah, but it'll be a great discussion, and we can, we can just talk about it at town hall, just to see what we can do to improve the safety and the lives of the folks who live on that street. Because another piece was that folks were trying to avoid the stop train, and they were cutting down High School Court. So it seems that that street has a lot of issues with folks cutting through. It's not normal traffic pattern, right? At high speeds, children playing. We'll add it to town hall and just get folk, and see what, how people are feeling.
How would that affect the fire department and the rescue and all that, the police department? How would they patrol? And I think that was turned into a one-way street.
Yeah, I don't think anyone here is, like, raising their hand saying we want it one way, you know, but it would be impactful. You know what I think of? I think of, and I'm sorry that I wouldn't even vocalize this, I think about public works as productivity. Because as they have to, you know, go back to their station, their home base, they would have to go around town to get back to it, right? So there's a lot of things beyond safety. It's gonna be impactful if that's what we decided to do, but to John's point, I don't think anyone's there. But the discussion will be great, just to see how can we improve the safety of that street. And we'll do that at the town hall meeting. John, do you have anything else for us?
Mr. Morse.
Oh, Mr. Morse, yes, sir.
I do have a comment. I live on the Glorious Court, this side of the street. We've got three incidences of semis coming into the, into the area. One made it all the way down Beddinger and turned on Franklin and got trapped. Law enforcement was called out. It took several hours to get that trucker out of there. The next one, I was fortunate enough to stop at Plum at the stop sign, and here's a semi coming in. So I got out and I encountered the person, and I told him, I know, Hoda Marshall, I will take you out of here. He wanted to go down Plum. Imagine a semi going down Plum, where are they gonna go? So I backed him out to Main Street. He was looking for Knox. I think that's where-
Oh, Dick Knox down here.
Industrial Park.
Yeah.
The third one was a person with a semi delivering a car to Franklin. And he was able to bring that semi down and pack it up Franklin, unload that car, take it back down Franklin and come out Beddinger. He was an expert driver. But that's just three instances in the past year that we've had a mess up in here. There is a sign up at, what's that street, I forget?
Old Beaver, yeah.
Old Beaver Road. This is do not trust your GPS. This is specific for truckers. Do not trust your GPS in this area. But I can feel for truckers, because they get in here and they don't know where to go, and you can't turn a semi around on a dime. So it may be becoming a virus throughout the city of Walton, for truckers to get in here and not know the best way to get around to get to their destination.
Well-
So just to bring that up in the next conversation.
Well, I appreciate that. Maybe Mr. Bogan would have information, or even you, Major Noel. Maybe it's just a rumor, but when this happened this weekend with the truck that got stuck, a resident stated that, and this was on social media, that the truck driver potentially was using, was not using commercial GPS. Is there a difference?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Okay. So how do we solve for that, right? Because if they were using commercial GPS, it would not be routing them there.
We're dealing with a county-wide problem.
Right.
I sit on the Traffic Safety Committee for the county, so a lot of these topics are very familiar with, and it's a, it's an ongoing issue in the county. So to piggyback on what we've said, professional truck drivers are a thing of the old, there's not anymore. You don't see those types of individuals anymore, unfortunately. And we're dealing with a lot of individuals that are unable to speak English, read signs, things that I need to go to, the type of people that we're running into and coming into contact with when they're bowling down Beddinger, there's one down, you know, 118, we have them going all the way down into Bellevue and then Petersburg, and then getting stuck on the S curve trying to come back out through 75. It is an issue all throughout the county. Traffic Safety Committee for the county, our big thing is obviously educational awareness, signage, making sure you have the proper signage in the city is a good thing. But in a city such as this, do you want to litter your entire city with no truck signs on every single side street you have? Does it cause heartburn for the city? Absolutely. But how often is it truly occurring? Like, it says three times in a year kind of issue? I would consider ourselves lucky that there wasn't significant property damage or anything like that. But that's what you're gonna get. You got an industrial park right, right around the corner here, and, you know.
Maybe a sign that says industrial park.
You see it as well. Up in Hebron, it's a system issue. But that's where the industrial parks are. They make one false turn, especially in Walton, they're not, they're gonna get stuck, they're gonna probably be able to get out, and then fall for fast entry. And again, hopefully, no property damage happening to any of the residents here. It's a constant battle that we're fighting. I like a lot of the suggestions.
Well, and you hit on something.
I don't have the answer on those.
Right. And you hit on something, you know, because we recently put up the sign at the end of Old Beaver that said no through trucks because of another complaint. But to your point, do you want that at the end of every street? Probably not. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I, piggyback, just piggyback. I, I was fighting that battle 10 years ago when I was working at KYTC, like contacting Barman and Google and Apple and trying to get the, you know, updates made for the scooty up in Burlington when that was new, and trucks that get stuck in, down at Bellevue Bottoms. And they, their response was, yeah, well, we're gonna put out a patch in about six months, we'll get it back. So it's just not something that's original and rare. And so, you know, I would suggest, if we know what business they're trying to go to, to get in touch with the business and try and get them to do more outreach to the drivers, to tell them, hey, this is the right way to go, don't, you know, don't make these, you know, get lost, you know, call or something. They'll try to negotiate the side streets. If you're just trying to do it, address it through GPS companies, isn't that a good idea?
Yes, sir.
I just want everybody to understand one thing. Obviously, traffic enforcement and enforcing stuff like that is educating, educating the public, right? The issue that we have when we're dealing with trucks and with KYTC and all that stuff is, I can write you a speeding ticket in Boone County and, you know, the next day or the next two weeks, I change your behavior, right? These trucks that we're seeing on Beddinger or wherever throughout the county that are getting stuck, they're from California. You know what I mean? It's the next truck that comes in is gonna do the same thing. So we're not educating. If it's specific companies that are local that will see any issues, then yeah, we can have, reach out, you know, reach out to those companies, advise them, hey, this is the truck route, so on and so forth. But if you're dealing with third-party vendors that are from all over the country, so we're not, you know, we do enforcement, but it's a struggle for us, because we're not educating, we're not changing the behavior. Does that make sense?
It does. And so to his point, I'm curious if we, if we understood, so- And so to his point, I'm curious if we, if we understood, so like if they're all headed to Dick Knott down here, the folks there who are shipping things out, would it be feasible to reach out to their operations to say, hey, the logistics company that you're working with, it's imperative that you provide accurate-
It is. Then, one example of that is Dollar General. When they opened Dollar General, the GPS routing for anybody coming south into Kentucky was to have them exit at US 42, go down US 42, take Hick's Pike to Richwood Road, Richwood Road to Chambers, four one Hick's each to get to Dollar General.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. And whose direction was that?
That was the GPS, that was the GPS.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we had power lines down on Richwood Road, they tore Hick's Pike pieces, and then at some point we had to intervene, so we contacted Dollar General, brought Frank Smith and our county engineer, contacted Dollar General, and kind of got that changed on the logistical side from their end, and it seemed to prevent it a little bit.
Understood.
But that's a problem with law enforcement as well, too, because you respond to this after the guys ripped down power lines and everything else, and you says, look, my GPS told me to go this way. So really-
Did you say that wasn't commercial GPS, sir?
It was.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it was. And that's, you know, do you enforce that?
All right, how can you?
Yeah, morally, it's tough, too.
Yeah.
But-
Well, maybe we can start with educating the folks who are here in town, especially as we have more warehouses opening, that they just be partners with the residents here, and that's what happens when you build warehouses near residential, right? And thank you for what you added in this conversation, but I think that that would be good, if we could be proactive, to reach out to say, this is the problem that we're dealing with, and you can help us by A, B, and C.
You got a great conversation.
Well, I appreciate the-
Started developing the workout.
Absolutely, I appreciate the conversation, yes, ma'am.
I lived in a very heavily trafficked area in Southern Mississippi, which is just looking at this, so happy to hear where the car is. What they did, they repaid State Line Road, which is mostly residential, we give it a lot of work, a good deal, but they put in a shipping company or a truck company or Dominion, or whatever, they're making off the road better than they knew. They destroyed a residential road within a month. So what the city did to respond was fix the road for the signs that said $1,000 per fine, $1,000 now for four trucks, have strictly enforced, and it stopped.
Wow.
So they're showing, you don't find a big California companies, companies that will stop, and you just have to, you know, check, but there was a huge difference.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because signs don't stop them, because we have a, we have a no through trucks on the end of Old Nicholson, and they run right in there and go all the way down and-
Yeah, I live in the corner of San McCray, and we're going down there.
That's bad, huh?
And trucks come out all the time, they're always getting caught there.
Yeah, it's hard for a car to get out there.
Well, the turn right on the San McCray, and the truck, and the driver-
Yeah. That's difficult.
They're always getting caught there, and the truck, because it's the car, and I'm currently going down, and they have to stop for a while.
Thank you again for adding that, and to Major Noel's point that if it is folks who are coming from different states, who potentially aren't English speakers, right? It doesn't matter how many signs we have, if they're unable to read those. So I think, which is a good suggestion, because when you hit someone's pocketbook, it kind of changes behavior, right? And, I mean, a thousand dollars would change my behavior, I'm not sure if it would, a big corporation. But I think we can commit to just working with our partners here, our neighbors, to say, this is how you're impacting the city, this is how you're impacting our residents, and how can you help us fix it? And we can start there and just-
We have a, Mayor, we have a commercial vehicle enforcement division, the Sheriff's Office, so, you know, we do outreach and things that, with companies, you know, local companies, about safety and all that type of stuff. So if you need any assistance around, need education on the laws, federal carrier safety guidelines are extremely stringent, but there's some, there's a lot of leeways. Like you talked about Old Nicholson, there's nothing we can do from an enforcement aspect if they're going to a place of business to do work or whatever, we can't just-
There's nothing down there, though. They just don't, on accident, I think.
We can market up all we want, but if we're making the delivery, or, you know, if it's a blood wiser truck or a Pepsi truck going down, you know, leaving this gas station and going around Max Liquor or whatever, and it says no through trucks, we can't enforce those based on the federal guideline.
Oh, so that's a suggestion, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good to know. So now you're littering the streets with signs that are useless.
Not technically, but it's very hard to articulate issuing that federal citation from a law enforcement standpoint.
Understood. Thank you.
Just a thank you.
Appreciate that, I'm sure-
It's a good discussion.
It is.
I think it opens up a lot more lines of communication. Thank you, Albert, yeah, Albert, checking this out.
Awesome. Any other, thank you, sir, any other comments or suggestions regarding the trucks?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Does semi, so can we allow the goat down Chambers Road?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
But at the tunnel, where it has a tunnel, there's a sign there that says, the height of the road, there's one with a-
And third, it depends on, so just right back to the conversation I just had, it depends on what their purpose is.
Right, I understand that, but if they tried, I had heard the semi tried to get through there, and didn't know limitations, they got stuck in the tunnel.
And that would be a height restriction, but that tunnel should have a 13, 13.4-
That's what I'm thinking.
13.4 height restriction, a tractor trailer will fit through there.
Exactly.
And that would be up to the officer toward that investigate as to what their purpose was. But if, and I think it might be related to going from the gravel pit to the other gravel pit.
No, no, it was going straight through.
Okay, but you don't know where to-
No, I don't know where the vehicle was going, and I didn't actually witness it, I just heard that that had happened in the past, and that's what made the sign go up, was to let drivers know, because most drivers know the signs of the road, so they know where they can fit.
The sign was put up because they didn't want dump trucks on Chambers. However, they didn't realize that we can't force it if they're doing a job.
Or building houses back there, and they go all the way-
If they're leaving in asphalt and they're going to Long Drive.
Understood.
Other gaps on the queue.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a street.
Bless you, sir, excuse me, thank you.
This is a good conversation, I think, and I appreciate, Mayor, that you opened this up.
Absolutely.
Because another thing on Beddinger, as you probably know, you talk about people that have bought a home and they can park on the street, from 25 to Plum.
Right.
People can park on the right side of the street.
On Beddinger?
No, on Beddinger, from-
Plum.
To Plum, yeah, to Plum. If you live on Beddinger, from 25 going down to Plum, you're going to turn a left on Plum, there's parking on the street, I mean, no parking on the street.
Right, no parking.
And then from Plum down, there's parking on the right side only.
Yes, sir.
The idea that bothers me is the people that live from 25 to Plum, thought, single-car garage, so it's understandable, they might have to park on the street. From Beddinger down and throughout that area and subdivision, there's no parking on the right side of the street, but everybody has a two-car garage. So with a two-car garage, you can park two cars in your garage, two cars in your driveway, and two more cars in your driveway if you tighten them up to the garage.
Right.
So there's really no reason to park on the street. And for that man to motivate or navigate that semi, the cars lined up down the right side of Franklin, I thought was a basic feat, because I used to haul munitions with a semi. So I know what semi drivers go through, and it's not easy to move that trailer around.
Well, you said he was an expert, right?
He does, he does, you know, right? Even the little kids were impressed with what that guy did. But they don't-
Well, we're going to hire him to train all the other puppies.
Right.
What's his name? He's going to bring the Bible study, I think.
And he's not here for Ward, and he deliver a car, it won't be a company, and the car is about a few hundred thousand dollar car.
Wow, nice.
Yeah, just keep it in the garage. But yeah, but thanks for letting me conclude myself.
Absolutely, yes, sir. I thank you for adding to it, and hopefully by town hall, then we can just have an update for the trucks and the through issues.
Oh, do well.
Okay, awesome. Matt Brown, you with us?
I am with you.
You are there, thank you, sir, because we're getting ready to move into readings of ordinances. Before we move forward, are there any other questions or comments about the last topic?
It's a good time, eh?
Yes, sir, I appreciate you all being here. So we'll move forward with the second reading of ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending section 150.35 therein and creating subsection G therein in order to establish an inspection and permit program for mobile food service to include food trucks, food trailers, food canopies and tents, and delegate the authority to the Walton Fire District's Inspection Bureau to conduct life safety inspections in accordance with the Kentucky Standards of Safety, Chapter 10, Title 815 Kentucky Administrative Regulations, and to issue the permit upon successful inspection. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. That title has a lot of the substance of this ordinance. This was suggested by the fire chief, and if you look at page one there of the ordinance, you see that there are two types of permits. One is a short-term permit from zero to three days, which is sort of a streamlined permit, and then there's a long-term food service permit of greater than three days, and that is a lot more specific and a lot more requirements for it. So that is the title and summary, and you can adopt this ordinance by motion, if you like.
Motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Flegge. Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell. Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. The second reading of ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending ordinance 2024-17, requiring all businesses operating in the city to apply for and obtain an occupational license account from the city or its designee, and requiring all employers to deduct and withhold from the compensation of its employees working in the city an occupational tax and pay it to the city or its designee. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, that, the title of that ordinance goes pretty far into explaining what we're up to here. We're adopting a payroll tax. We did adopt ordinance 2024-17 last year modeled after another city's ordinance. The decision was made to pursue the county in collecting this since they have a staff and software and experience in collecting payroll taxes, and their manager and Council member Gaskell and I worked together in order to streamline our ordinance and bring it more in the sync with their collection procedures. So what you have in front of you now is an amended ordinance in order to do that, and we're working on an interlocal agreement with the county to put all that into effect. So again, this is the title and summary, and you can adopt this ordinance by motion.
Motion to adopt.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, motion to adopt, and then second, and then go ahead and take it in the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't, if there are items of discussion for that. Margie, were you getting ready to say something?
Would this, would it sound like still going around Boone County to do it? Would it, would it say, is it moving patches?
Yes, that's a great point. Right now, what they, right now, it would be 10%, which is, which is a lot.
So can I jump in?
Please.
So a couple days in, here at our town hall, you have a kind of a perspective. Boone County currently has three cities, right? Union, Florence, and us. They collect, they don't, they don't collect property taxes from any city. They, Florence collects their own, Union collects their own. Boone County collects their, Boone County tax. Kent County is used to collecting for other cities. They collect for 16 cities, inside of Kent County. They have the staff, they have the people, so their percentage for our Kent County side is really not far. Boone County has to stand it up, because they don't do it currently. And so I know where to meet, and where to come up with what it's going to look like, and how does it work. I know that 10% price that the mayor has quoted will come down if other cities like Union or Florence or whoever also came on board with Boone, but by now we're figuring it out. So Kent looks like it's probably a little smaller, a little less, because it's a lesser chunk, unless they do it more.
So the Walton's one moves out, it's going to have to try to kick Kent County in?
Well, we could move out either way, right? So the work is big enough, we're going to either have to hire an employee to specifically do that work, or we pay the county. Right? So we're going to come out of pocket as from a collection agency, because someone has to do all the work, and building, and we have to buy software, we have to hire a person. So when we look at the outbuild cost of doing it in-house, it's probably going to be pretty much in the line of okay.
And the great news is that through the years, if we decide to continue to go with the county, that is, we can negotiate that. We're not, we're not held to that.
This is to stand it up, right? There's a purchase of software that has to have, there's some things that have to happen to stand this process up, but once it's done, then I think there's some wiggle room.
You know, one, I thought about that when they started about, you know, factories to come in.
Well, that is, that is being collected by Kent County, so that, the current TIF or payroll tax that exists in TIF districts is already being collected by Kent County because they have that, that infrastructure, and we built it in the TIF agreement years ago.
And you don't have to believe that we've been handling wrong, so you have the law to do it.
Yeah, I think absolutely, I think it's the discussion. If it makes sense, this technology is there to bring that house, it's going to be an effective way to do business. I'll present it to the mayor and council.
What we found, though, is that Union did it by themselves, right? And although they've done it, it wasn't easy, and they feel like, as they were trying to help us move through this process, they suggested, don't do it, don't bring it in-house, none of us are knowledgeable enough. Is it doable? Absolutely, but to John's point, it was probably going to take at least two full-time employees to make it happen. And that's just one piece of it, right? Just being, just the education piece, none of us had that. So that we could get this move, and the county is willing to partner with us, but the great news is, again, we're not locked into it. Are there any other questions or comments before we, we had a motion, we had a second, and then Rebecca, we can go to vote.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Flegge. Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell. Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Matt, sorry, she called your name on that, the train was passing through.
Ah, yeah.
Thank you, sir. And then the first reading of ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending chapter 74 of the city of Walton Code of Ordinances entitled Traffic Schedules by Creating Schedule 4 therein in order to prohibit heavy truck traffic from entering and exiting the west entrance of Town Center Drive from and to its intersection with Mary Grubbs Highway. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. That title sort of sums it up. We have trouble with large trucks going in that one exit there across from School Road and going throughout the Town Center. What we're trying to do is require the large trucks, which is defined in the ordinance as semi-trucks and trailers, destruction vehicles, large commercial vehicles and equivalent, to go in the other exit and entrance across from Beatrice Avenue. And although most of the enforcement will probably have to be done by law enforcement, we are including in this an alternative enforcement that our code enforcement officer would cite people for violations of this ordinance and find them. So that's the subject of the first reading, and you typically vote on first reading, if you'd like to do that, you can do that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And just open for discussion, please.
I was talking about the stuff that was brought up there, and they were burying that the truck was running on the other side of, instead of the hill, because it deteriorates the hill and pasture.
Right.
So.
And we've replaced that several times, that hill, right? Mr. Bogan, that Coles. She was talking about when she was on council with the inception of Town Center, how the Coles Hill coming up out of, how it deteriorates, that truck traffic will deteriorate that road, and we've experienced that and know that.
Yeah, and we didn't get the entire, the entire hill. The last time we did work out there, we had to contract to put fiber reinforcement in the surface so it roll up longer. It seems like it's been performing pretty well so far, but yeah, I would say any future maintenance we do out there.
Is that issue coming in again?
That's, yeah.
That's a whole difference from what you said, that they want stuff to come up there. And I kind of laughed, I don't know how it was going to stop, because they're going to come through the boxes, and I thought that was going to move it around. So.
Well, and here we are in a world of, again, mixed industrial with residential, and when the, and commercial, when the trucks are trying to come out by the McDonald's, one truck can block the whole intersection, and now it's affecting the whole light, right? Where with the Coles entrance, it's more of a straight shot.
I told them that's what they're, that what they would want to do, and it deteriorates, especially if you didn't have any enforcement to stop. Common sense would, if I was a truck driver, I wouldn't want to go straight, I wouldn't want to.
I agree.
So.
I agree. But I do think that it's important that we continue to look at what we can do to reinforce the roads and just, it's not a residential street. It's going to have heavy traffic on it, so when we, when we repair and rebuild those roads, it needs to be rebuilt, rebuilt as such. Mr. Morse?
I do have a comment. There's a stop sign when you come out of the Grover parking lot area to turn left to come up the street to the light. But coming out of Coles to go right, left, or straight, there's no stop sign. So the people coming out of Coles always try to stop, and then that forces someone else to stop. And with the traffic coming out of the center back there with the Tractor Supply, Dollar General, all that new housing, perhaps we should consider putting a stop sign coming out of Coles to keep everybody slowed down. Pardon me?
I thought you, I thought you had meant Grover, or Coles.
Yeah.
Coles, yeah. You're talking about on Coles.
Coming out of Grover, you have to stop, there's a stop sign.
Correct.
Coming out of Coles, there is not. So that's confusing to people. Why are those people stopping and not having to come meeting in the same minute?
And I think that's a great point, and to your point, and slow them down. And I think that's, it goes right in line with the subjects we'll be discussing in our Town Hall meeting, and we can add that, too. Yes, sir.
Bring all those together.
Yeah.
And you got reinforced from all the way around.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know we're going to put the signs up, right? We have a plan for that. Is that, is that correct, Matt?
If this passes.
Yeah, the state is putting those up.
Do we know, we know when?
I told them to hold off while we sorted out the legislation, but no, we've got it more. So I'll, I'll.
And then I'll commit to reach out to Dollar General, Tractor Supply, Coles, that, Randy Grover, just to tell them, you know, let them know, hey, let your drivers know that there's going to be a change, that they're not, you know, they may be just very accustomed to making that first, right? So I'll reach out to the big ones, and we can get the signs up.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we can move to vote.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Fleggy.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Yeah.
Perfect, very good. We'll move on with, with council comments. Councilwoman Beach.
I think I was going to say something. Come back to me.
Okay, I will. Councilman Brown, do you have anything?
I do not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good point.
Agreed. Councilwoman Long?
This is just a fantastic conversation with everyone, and it was awesome. Thank you all for being a part of it, because this is, this is how you get things done, is people talking to each other. Awesome.
Agreed. Councilman Martin?
I don't have anything.
And back to Councilwoman Beach.
No, not that. Maybe next one.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dave.
I was going to ask when the, the.
Speak up and share with us.
When? I was just going to wonder when the, we have new sign, new street signs for Main Street, our historic Main Street, and I was just wondering when those would be put up.
That's great. So we appreciate, and Councilwoman Long sponsored, and it's going to be beautiful down our historic district here on Main Street, signs that are decorative, it's going to be a nice addition. We do have them in.
They're here.
We were hyper focused on Old Fashioned Day, and then we just had.
I didn't want to ask until after that was over.
So it should be at top of mind now.
You may have a large truck to live, right?
Yeah, sorry.
And then, yeah, so they, I talked to the gentleman yesterday, he did some.
So we should see those soon.
Yeah. Any, just a quick other note, just on signs, we talk a lot about signs, just one thing to note is, remember, gentlemen, stop signs and all those things, we, they need to be at seven feet. And so just know that as signs get hit or broken or replaced, they're going to be replaced to seven feet breakaway. And that's the way it is, right? Because we have signs that are put in five feet or runway, or.
Okay.
Different developers put them in, right? Different subdivisions. So as they get replaced, they're going to replace back to the right size. And so if they're specific, like dealing with, like, there's the valleys in H O A, if they want their holes nicer, they're going to have to pay for it.
Yeah.
But as thing gets broken, we'll be replacing with the breakaway, the right ones, the right size from here on out.
At seven feet.
At seven feet, correct. So when you pull up those stop signs, it may look, it may feel crazy.
Looking up at it like looking at Deontay.
Yeah, and it's huge. But it feels weird, though. That can't be right. But really, that's the way it is, because when you're looking at SUVs or trucks and all those things. It needs to be at that height, so they see it.
Understood. Thank you. Onto Mayor's comments. I just want to thank everyone. Old Fashioned Day was a huge success, a great time. We look forward to planning for next year and just continuing to improve it every year, but it was, it was a great time. So for everyone that was there, thank you for being there to support it. I hope everyone enjoyed it. My only last thing, I, I received a call last night, and John Wingright, you talked to the gentleman. It's a gentleman who owns property over, and this is for council for you to think about, and Mr. Duncan for next steps, but a gentleman on Chandler Drive off Beaver Road owns property, and he wants conditional zoning change. And it's my understanding that it would go from an A1 to an I2. Was that your understanding?
An I1, an I2.
An I1 to, an I2?
Yeah, so currently it's the, it's a group, a bowling group that's out there. It's a property that's not in current use, but it has a back fence. I don't know if everyone's been out there, but it's really a fence in an area where they used to keep tractor trailers. Now they want to do like a rental, like a rental equipment business, i.e. like a Sunbelt or something like that, very similar to behind the fence that already exists. The only difference for the conditional use may be the fact of height, right? So if there's cranes or something like that, so if you think of like Texas Trailer, right? Beer, right? Where they have an out front, and it's a very similar situation, they're an I1. But then if you think of like Sunbelt and Florence, which may have the cranes, the higher ones, they're an I2. So currently that one's an I1. If maybe if the owner needs to get conditional use, then they'll prop us in that for planning.
Well, and actually, so what, we just went through this council with the conditional use down on the little yellow building at the end of Walton that went to a car lot, right? And so because there was support on council, they, correct me if I'm wrong, that support was essentially put in front of planning and zoning, who then made a decision, and so in speaking with this gentleman last night, what he's looking for, and he's willing to come to our next caucus meeting next month, but what he's looking for is council support. And then with council support, Mr. Duncan, regardless, it would go in front of planning and zoning, right? But it would be more favorable to him if he had council's backing. True story?
At least he knows that you would look favorably upon it if the conditions were proper.
So what's next steps for him, then?
If it's a zone change, he needs to apply for a zone change with the planning commission.
Okay, very good.
They'll hold a public hearing and then make a recommendation back to us.
Understood. At which point we support it or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes a zone change itself is not enough. I don't know if that is a permitted or conditional use of one of those zones, so.
Okay.
They would need to evaluate that. They may need a text change also to allow it. That's what we did for the car lot that you were talking about. We had to do a text change to allow car lots as a conditional use.
Very good. So then we will point him in the direction of planning and zoning, and then he can come talk to us for caucus next month, and then council can learn more to see if it's, if it's something you support. Very good. Any other questions or comments before we motion to adjourn? As Councilwoman Long stated, it's great having a crowd here, voices and just conversations, because together we can make everything better. It takes, it takes the village, right? Yes, ma'am?
How many people do you have employed? I know last time, you said, like, you know, or some, and always different, so I looked on to see how many, is that what is on your list?
The website?
Yes, the website. Is that updated?
It may not be updated, because I'm not sure we have our senior center, but we'll make sure it is updated. But to answer your direct question, we have 12 city employees. Three are staffed inside of City Hall. Two are part-time employees here for our senior center. We have two at the sewer plant, and the remainder are our public works gentlemen.
So you only have three staff, correct?
No, we have 12.
I mean, or in the city, who do the.
Yes. Inside City Hall, we have three. We have, we have our city clerk, and we have two deputy city clerks.
So who are the other people?
So, are you wanting to know their names, or are there people in there that you're confused by?
And are they being paid? Are they from, I know you mentioned you had three committees, and I was wondering, well, are these members of those committees?
No, ma'am.